It is Wednesday, November 13th at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I know the Mayor pro tem Curtis Richardson will be joining us shortly, but we do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Quincy Griffin of the Family Worship and Pray Center to please provide the invocation. Please stand and join me. Pastor Griffin, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
And I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance when you are finished.
Let us pray. Father, first and foremost, we just give your name praise, honor, and glory for giving us the privilege to be here today. But we thank you for this meeting, but most of all, we thank you for the leadership that you called to serve in Tallahassee. We thank you for every commissioner. We thank you for Mayor Daley, and we ask right now that you bestow a blessing upon them. Give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to lead the city to the next level. And Lord, bless them because of their wisdom and allow that blessing to fall on our community, fall on this city, every avenue, street, corridor. Let everyone experience that blessing. We thank you right now because we believe that the walls of protection are even here. We thank you right now because we believe that even people's bodies that are sick will be even healed because of the fact that we are all unified in this city. Take us to the next level, oh God. Keep us protected, and we believe that this is going to be a great meeting. We believe that the best is yet to come for the end of 2019, and we believe even greater is coming in 2020. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray. Let everybody say amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. City Manager, that is why we bring in members of the faith-based community to provide the invocation and don't turn it over to you every single time.
Well done. Well done, sir.
Pastor Griffin, thank you so much. We certainly do appreciate starting us off on a great day today. Folks, as we start off every City Commission meeting, I want to welcome you to your chambers. We have a great agenda for today, and we're going to have a wonderful meeting. I encourage each and every one of you to help me and this body set the example on civility and how government should be run. With that, Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, we do. We have three modifications. Item 1312, 13.12, was updated. Item 15.02, the attachment was updated, and the attachment was added to item 13.03.
Wonderful. I'll ask from down here, are there any questions on the modification? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, we have three incredible presentations that is my honor to do as Mayor of Tallahassee. And first and foremost, we have a presentation of the proclamation recognizing November 4th as World Diabetes Day, and I would like to ask Don Springs, Jessica Jamison, John Waldron, Lee Miles, Allison Weinman, and Brian Smat to please come join me. And anybody else I'd like to come join us as well. Did I miss them? Who did I miss? I'm sorry. Come on up. Brian, I'm going to pick on you for a second. Brian is our wellness coordinator here at the City of Tallahassee, does an absolutely fantastic job. All of our community partners participated in a diabetes, pre-diabetes health fair right outside on the second floor earlier today, which was a tremendous success. As Mayor, diabetes awareness and pre-diabetes is very important to me, and it is one of my health initiatives, and I look forward to joining you tomorrow as well as we kick off an incredible day. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the World Health Organization and the International Diabetes Federation established World Diabetes Day in 1991, in December 2006, the United Nations passed a resolution making World Diabetes Day an official United Nations World Health Day. And whereas diabetes is the seventh leading cause of death by disease in the United States and around the world, and is a leading cause of blindness, kidney failure, amputation, heart attack, and stroke. And whereas in Florida, it is estimated over 2.4 million people have diabetes and over 5.8 million have pre-diabetes. And where in 2014, one out of 10 mothers giving birth in Florida experienced gestational diabetes during their pregnancy. And whereas the number of children with type 1 diabetes has increased 21% from 2001 to 2009. And if unabated, the prevalence of the disease will double every generation. And where previously rare in children, the number of youth being diagnosed with type 2 diabetes is also increasing at a significant rate. Where 1 in 3 children born in the year 2000 will go on to develop type 2 diabetes. And whereas obesity and lifestyle factors are major contributors to type 2 diabetes, and in 2016, more than 1.9 billion adults were overweight or obese globally, and additional 381 million children are classified as overweight or obese around the world. And whereas over 84 million Americans, or 1 in 3 adults, now have pre-diabetes, and of those, 9 out of 10 of them don't even know they have it. Research has shown conclusively that type 2 diabetes can be prevented or significantly delayed by participating in a lifestyle change program that focuses on behavioral change, activity, and healthy eating. And this lifestyle change can successfully prevent or delay type 2 diabetes. And whereas the national cost of diagnostic diabetes has risen from 245 billion in 2012 to 347 billion in 2017, and where the cost of diabetes and pre-diabetes were in excess of 24 billion in Florida. Now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby recognize November 14th as World Diabetes Day and supports the goals and ideals of World Diabetes Day and urge all Tallahassee residents to recognize and raise awareness of diabetes, to strive for a more active lifestyle, eating healthier, and monitoring the health of our children at home and in our schools to ultimately reduce the effects of this disease on our society. In witness of each and every one of you, I sign my signature dated today, November 13th, 2019. It's my honor to present to this august body right here this proclamation. Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm Donna Springs with Tallahassee Memorial, and we're very pleased to receive the proclamation. Myself and the partners that are up here representing JDRF and AHEC, and Brian with the city and TMH, and several other community partners in raising awareness about diabetes. November is National Diabetes Month, and as the mayor said, tomorrow is World Diabetes Day. You may see some structures lit in blue around the city this week, and that's in recognition of World Diabetes Day. One of the promising things that I can say is that there is a possibility of preventing type 2 diabetes. About half of all type 2 diabetes can be prevented, and that's why we have this initiative to try and screen for type 2 diabetes and implement some lifestyle behavior programs to help people reduce their risk. Type 1 diabetes is another type of diabetes that cannot be prevented, and we're also wanting to raise awareness of that diabetes type and have people find out more what they can do to take care of it and live longer and healthier lives. So, thank you very much for recognizing tomorrow and Diabetes Month.
Thank you. Why don't we get a quick question? And now I would like to present a series of proclamations recognizing the 27th Annual Big Ben Minority Enterprise Development, MED, Week Award recipients. And I would like to ask Edward Akoff, George Johnson, Aaron Milner, Primus Matega, Gloria Pugh, and Dean, you're more than welcome to join us too if you want to please join us here at the podium. And while I have three identical proclamations for each one of the award-winning groups, I'd like to read in part. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the first week of October has been designated as Minority Enterprise Development Week by the President of the United States since 1983 and observed by the Big Ben Minority Enterprise Development, MED Week Committee, our community and local economy have been enriched and well-served by the goods and services provided by minority and women-owned businesses. And whereas an important activity of the annual MED Week observance is the selection of a prominent entrepreneur or economic development advocate for recognition as the Minority Business Enterprise, MBE, of the Year, a prominent woman entrepreneur for recognition as the Woman Business Enterprise, WBE, of the Year, and a prominent minority entrepreneur for recognition as the Reggie Roll Economic Development Champion of the Year. And whereas George Johnson, Aaron Milner, and Primus Matega started Johnson &amp; Milner Incorporated in 2013 with the desire to create a practice producing high-quality, functionally efficient, budget-conscious engineering that gratifies and inspires the end user. Johnson &amp; Milner's leadership are comprised of young professionals and their team that has gained numerous years of experience through their role of design leaders in some of the most technically challenging and rigorous building types. Some examples are healthcare, higher education, commercial and residential building that take pride in culminating long-term client relationships through a keen focus on genuine interests in each client's unique goals and strengths, strategies, and directions. And whereas Gloria Pugh has served as the Chief Executive Officer and President of Amwat Moving Warehouse and Storage Headquarters in Tallahassee, Amwat Moving Warehouse and Storage diversified lines of business include local, statewide, national, and international moving services, packing and custom crating, warehousing, and logistics, as well as climate-controlled storage. And whereas Edward Akoff has more than 25 years of experience in small business development, supplier diversity, and entrepreneurship prior to joining Florida State University as its first Director of Procurement Services Supplier Diversity Program, say that fast, five times fast. He has administered programs for Jackson County, the K-12 public school system, and higher education entities. In addition, Mr. Akoff is Director for Leon County Schools Minority Business Development Office. He has championed relationship building between staff, minority businesses, and major construction contractors. Now therefore I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee and my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby recognize the 2019 Minority Business Enterprise of the Year, George Johnson and Aaron Milner of Johnson &amp; Milner Incorporated, 2019 Women Business Enterprise of the Year, Gloria Pugh of Amwat Mobile Warehousing and Storage, and 2019 Reggie Roll Economic Development Champion of the Year, Mr. Edward Akoff of FSU's Procurement Services Supplier Diversity Program. In witness of each and every one of you here today, I affix my signature dated on each one of these proclamations, November 13th, 2019. Please join me and congratulate you. Would love for you to provide some comments. Gloria?
Thank you so much. It is, I'm completely honored to be recognized as a woman-owned business and especially Woman Owner Business of the Year. Nothing, none of this would be possible without my husband, Dean Pugh, who's sitting up front, and with my employees, without my employees. They make me look really, really good. You surround yourself with hard-working, good people, and they will deliver the goods for you. So, and I also have to thank the City of Tallahassee because you guys have supported our business greatly, and I just want you to know that we treat everybody the way we want to be treated, and we want to also give back to our community. And so it is our vital importance to lead by example, to show people that even a small business can do big, big-hearted, good deeds. Thank you so much, the City of Tallahassee, and thank you so much to everybody who has supported us, and thank you, my love, my Dean. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Mayor, we committed to the City of Tallahassee, Leon County, for this honor they've given us. It's been a great thing for us to have. We love the city that we're in. We love doing work in this city. We love being a part of this city. We just want to keep going, go further and further and further.
My name is Jared Akoff. I'm not Edward Akoff, of course, but I do accept this on behalf of my father, who was unable to be here, but he sends his regards and thanks to everybody who voted for our man. We appreciate it. Thank you.
For our third presentation today, I would like to ask the Child's High School Golf Team State Champion Team and all members of the faculty and administration to please come join me. How you doing, Mr. Burgess? Good to see you, sir. This is an exciting day. Gentlemen, you won the state championship. Congratulations. And just out of curiosity, who's the best player on the team? Anybody want anybody?
Uh-oh.
And for all you golf fans out there, I hope it's not lost on you, the joke that John Daley's presenting the proclamation to the golf team. And I have to tell you, I'm not going to point the mountain and embarrass them, but I feel pretty old because a couple of these guys, I changed their diaper when they were born, and I've known them ever since. So it's great to see y'all here. Let me read this proclamation. Skid on down a little bit. Skid on down. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the Child's High School Golf Team won the Class 3A state title by eight strokes over Lake Nona and defending champion Winter Park. And whereas this is the team's first state championship win and ninth consecutive state tournament appearance. And whereas junior Patrick McCann, Patrick, raise your hand. Florida State commitment shot a collective five under par, 71-68, to finish in a tie for third overall in the state competition. Sophomore Parker Bell, Parker, raise your hand. A Florida commitment shot one over, excuse me, a Florida commitment, I'm sorry about that. A Florida commitment shot one over both days, 73-73, to tie the 14th overall. And sophomore Aiden Nash, Aiden, raise your hand. Aiden Nash shot three over, 74-73, to tie for 16th overall. And whereas the Timberwolves finished the 2019 season with a record of 17-1, beating 91. And whereas Coach Ken Smith has led the Child's Golf Team for 15 years, being named the 2018 All-Big Ben Coach of the Year, and serves as a dedicated member of the school's math department and baseball program, showcasing outstanding leadership. And whereas the members of the Timberwolves varsity golf team, raise your hand one more time when I call your name, Aiden Nash, Parker Bell, Taylor Bell. Man, you look like your daddy. The man, the myth, the legend, Trey Bueller. Tank Lawson, Patrick McCann, Sanders O'Kelly, and Jake Springer. You look like your mama.
Uh-oh.
Have all demonstrated what it means to be hard-working student athletes with a collective GPA. Folks, a collective GPA of 3.97. Now therefore I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, along with my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby recognize the Child's High School Golf Team for winning the FHSAA Class 3A State Championship. In witness of each and every one of you with my signature affixed, today's date, November 13th, 2019. Gentlemen, congratulations. Mr. Burgess, I'm going to give you the floor. Principal Burgess, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Good afternoon, and as the non-golf player out of this group here, I just want to, first of all, thank everyone here, all the commissioners, mayor. These are hard-working individuals. First of all, I want to give a shout-out to every student athlete across Leon County. There are many kids that we know every day that get up in the pool at 4:30 in the morning, and kids that stay in this late and doing basketball practice 9:30 at night. But what I also can tell you is that their sports help keep their grades up, even as busy as they are because they want to compete. And there is talent here, and it's young talent, and they have a good time and they're good teammates with each other. So that's also a testament to our coach keeping them focused and just keeping their dreams alive. And so if you have a kid out there who's going into high school, I'm going to speak on behalf of every school here in the county, please get them involved with a sport or an activity. It does so many dividends. It gives them things to move them forward as far as when they go into business, they will carry those lessons with them. If they can survive having a snowman or a, on a hole, they can get through life.
That's you.
Yeah, definitely. So just on behalf of us, thank you for acknowledging them. They are champions, and you know, hopefully we'll get one more chance in front of the school board as well to get the chance to recognize them, and they deserve all of that, and we appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. City Manager, do we have any announcements?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
All right. We are at the time for citizen input on agenda items. I would like to remind everybody that we have two opportunities for the public to speak. This particular time of the meeting is for you to speak on an agenda item if you do not think you'll be here when the item comes up. We will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting for you to speak on anything that you would like, especially if it is not an agenda item. So let's move forward. Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we have several speakers at this early part of the meeting. The first is Maisha Mitchell. She'll speak at the center microphone there. I'll remind her and other speakers that you'll have three minutes for your remarks. There's a light in front of you that will be green, and it'll turn yellow and red, and if you would give your name and address, I believe you can begin at the mayor's okay.
Yeah, Ms. Mitchell, it's great to see you. And what item will you be speaking on this evening?
1309.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you. The floor is yours.
So, good evening, everybody. I'm Maisha Mitchell. I live at 812 Goodbred Lane in Frenchtown, and I'm here to speak about the Committee on the Impact of Poverty. I want to say thank you, first of all, for all the work you've done to support this effort in our community. We know that it's a severe need to address this issue as a collaboration, and I think this is the work we've been doing. I just want to say to you that over 200 people in Tallahassee and Leon County have presented and been part of our three summits to help develop strategies to reduce poverty and produce prosperity for all. And thanks to your work and your efforts, I did review the draft strategies that you have online. Thank you very much for that, and I'm very happy about it. Your input will continue to contribute to the success of the next summit and the stated shared solutions that we all have come to talk about together to deal with the issues of poverty, the working poor, and everyone in our community. So we'd like for you to save the date. It's coming up on the next Summit for, December 5th, at the FSU Turnbull Center. The Summit for is planned to engage even more people and to engage groups in creating a framework and making action plans that we can all produce prosperity for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Kate McFall, followed by Ashley England, each of them on item 13.10, the Public Safety Update.
Mrs. McFall, good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi there. Yes, Kate McFall, it's 1206 Walton Drive, Tallahassee. So thank you. And first, I do want to thank you for your support of animal services. Historically, this commission has been fantastic and very supportive of animal services and the hard-working people there and the animals and their care, and the important service that provides to our community. I know many of you are animal lovers, and that's a wonderful thing, but we know the community as a whole certainly, certainly supports animals and our Animal Service Center. I'm here to ask, I know that it's still early in the game, but if the Northwood Center is selected for the new emergency management complex, to please include animal services or consider including animal services in that project. Again, I know it's early, but it seems that that might be a really good option, and we, the options are obviously on the table, and again, it's early, and I know that. It may not be selected, but if it is, I think that it's a good possibility. And our shelter, the hard-working folks at our shelter, I mean, they have outgrown the facility in terms of programs and certainly in time. They've outlived it. It needs to be replaced, and we, the Humane Community is engaged in Tallahassee, as most of you know, and I did want to say thank you for many of you for meeting with me and talking with me and other advocates about the need for a new shelter. We also realize this doesn't happen overnight. It takes a little bit of time, and we're here for that time, and we'll be working with you. So again, if you do select Northwood, please consider including animal services in that project. And at the end of the day, we do need one, and we look forward to one, a new shelter facility, obviously partnering with the county. We realize that as well, but we look forward to working with you on projects for animal services and hopefully a new animal shelter facility in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Ashley England.
It's England.
She'll be followed by Bart Bibler.
Ms. England, welcome. Good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please, and what item will you be speaking on?
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley England. I live at 2221 Orange Avenue East, and I will be reiterating what Ms. Kate McFall has already stated on item number 1310. So as well as being a resident of Tallahassee, I'm also a third-year law student at Florida State University College of Law, but most importantly, I'm also a fellow animal lover as I have two rescue pets myself. That's why when I heard news that there was a possibility that the Animal Services Center could be relocated in Northwood, I wanted to have the opportunity to talk to all of you about why I think this is such a great opportunity to relocate. As Ms. McFall has already stated, already the services, they are amazing, and the staff is doing the best that they can, but the facility is getting dated. And from several of my peers who have visited there and have found their, part of their newest family member there, they have explained to me that it's not exactly the most modern or up-to-date facility. And so on behalf of animals and people who are looking for a future animal, to go and get a new location that's more modern and have everything that they need would be greatly beneficial to our community. And then the second reason why I urge the city to consider this is because as Northwood will be redeveloped at some point, these expenditures are already being made. This opportunity is already at our front door to take it, and so we just urge the city to at least consider moving animal services there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark?
Bart Bibler, on item 1309, your impact on poverty item.
It's great to see you, sir. Mr. Bibler, your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Bart Bibler. Excuse me, I live at 3673 Mossy Creek Lane, and I'm here today to give you a quick update about the 32304 Plus Prosperity for All summits. We've held three of them now at New Mount Zion AME Church, and they've had tremendous turnout. I would tell you that we really have now a movement, a community movement. In the first two summits, we identified 10 different goal areas and strategies for how to reduce poverty. Those were vetted at each table. They've been put up on Survey Monkey for rating and allowing people to review them, and they were discussed at each subsequent one for refinement. But where we're at now is really the critical point, and that is how do we implement all these wonderful strategies? And the key thing is that every one of those strategies hinges on intersector collaboration, every one of them. Not any of them can be done by just that given sector, and that was the major message of each of those identified strategies is that to solve poverty, we have to cut across the sectors of our community and help each other to reduce poverty, whether that's funding, whether that's prioritization, whether that's collaboration of policy changes that need to be implemented. That's the key. It's more collaboration. And of course, we're all collaborating a lot, probably too much, and being asked to collaborate more. But what we have learned is that success, true success in reducing poverty hinges on a structured model for that collaboration. And what you have before you is what's called collective impact to reduce poverty, and that's the most well-understood method of collaboration. And what we're suggesting is it's necessary to have this overall roundtable of all sectors to address poverty. And so as important and appreciated as it is that you're doing a lot more internally, at the same time, we respectfully request that you even seek more to collaborate among sectors. sectors. That's the basic message from every sector, especially the nonprofits. They want to collaborate more with the business sector and the government sector. We're glad to announce, as Maisha said, that the next summit will be held at FSU, thanks to President John Thrasher providing the facility for us. We hope that you will be there. We've had tremendous turnout of both city and county commissioners and a lot of other important sector representatives. But now we really need to find the way that we can put a structure together, support it, so that we have continued triage of our challenges to reduce poverty. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bibler. Appreciate it. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Cheryl Collier Brown. She's speaking on item thirteen oh two, which is school supplies for parking citations.
Collier Brown, it's great to see you. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. As I was sitting out and looking over at my commissioners and my mayor, I just want to thank-
Name and address, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you already knew me.
We do.
Cheryl Collier Brown, two-one-seven West Bravard Street. As I was saying, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Williams Cox for her wonderful idea about the school supplies with the parking citations. Being a proud educator on the South Side with the Title I schools, I just want to thank you all for considering to helping us with some funding for our schools on that side of town. And this is a plea and an invitation for all people to come and embrace our schools, our Title I schools on the South Side, because we have, we're the best kept secret in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say something real quick?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl Collier Brown. And let me just say that this is what, you taught all three of my boys, I think. She taught all three. She survived that. She survived the Cox, the Cox clan. And let me just say that I know she did a lot of buying out of her pocket, like a lot of teachers do, buying supplies out of their pockets. So hopefully this will help the schools and teachers not have to do that. And I'm from Gadsden County, and I'm sure I'm probably a proud Title I product. So just because someone puts a title on you, that doesn't mean that's who you are. So I want our students who are in schools that they call Title I to know that you are more than that title, and you are greater, and we are glad to participate in any way that we can to encourage you to continue to excel.
Excellent. And our next speaker, Mr. Clark?
I don't have any other speakers at this time. I do have a speaker who's asked to speak later when the item comes.
Excellent. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on an item before this commission? Mr. Sims, what item would you like to speak on? Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm at thirteen-twenty Avondale Way. Mr. Mayor, last week, I had an epiphany moment. I had the pleasure to attend the Capital City Advantage Conference, and I walked away with something that one of my good friends tried to take me to the woodshed and tell me, but it didn't work. But it's call, and I'm going to sound very professional here. And also, I'm on a roll, too, of my efficacy of coming to this podium and doing it in time. So I'm speaking of two large issues, so I may go over about thirty seconds.
Mr. Sims, try to stake as close as you can.
Yes, I will, I promise you. What I've learned was emotional intelligence and how I can facilitate in confirming negative visions upon me and what preventive ways I can do to deflect them. Not that I can control how someone thinks of me, that's the intelligence part of it. And so, and with that said, here is what I would really like to voice in reference to the selection process when it came to our Chief of Police. Mr. Revel, it is not about his integrity that I question. It is not about his dedication to the God that he serve or this community he choose to lead. But I feel that what has happened to Mr. Revel is a disservice of the process. And let me explain that. As you all know, I've been doing community service work for over twenty-five years in this community, Gadsden, Leon, Walco. And the major thing that I faced when I came to this committee was people would find out about my past, and they would say, well, why didn't you disclose that? And even though now we're in this era about you don't disclose, but we're also in this era of true transparency. And I felt like the process, not Commissioner Proctor, not me, not the family, was unfair to him, because someone should have made the committee aware of that.
You have about fifteen seconds.
Especially in this time and era with police brutality, even though I'm not saying we have that problem here. We've had some incidents, but it's not major. But in light of full scheme, I think that would have done Mr. Revel a much better favor to have that disclosed. And as I leave, my other thing, Mayor, is now the policy has changed. Where citizens now who attend these public city meetings have to pay for parking. The strategic plan is coming. I think that that is not fair. I also am advocating, and I've mentioned it to Mr. Doolin, I think that city employees should not have to pay for parking. We have put that in for a long time ago when we tore down the Pepper Building where my mama used to work for Bob Enzer. And we weren't supposed to be paying, employees weren't supposed to be paying for parking.
Mr. Sims, if you could wrap up your-
Yeah, no. Thank you so much, Mayor, for your courtesy and your time. I'm going home. I don't-
Yes, sir. It's good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, did have one additional speaker for him brought to me. That's Michael Rosenthal.
Mr. Rosenthal, on what issue? Thirteen eleven. Thirteen eleven. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Michael Rosenthal at four oh four five Kilmarton Drive. I'm here on item number thirteen eleven, this city audit. And I am requesting that in your audit of issues related to Scott Maddox, that you include the comp plan zoning land use changes for the Kalaran Country Club. Not only did this vote depend on Scott Maddox, it apparently relied on another commissioner named Redacted. And this Commissioner, Redacted, could deliver another Redacted Commissioner if necessary. That's three commissioners. That's the majority, the majority of the commission was corrupt. I emphasize "was." Not only that, but J.T. Burnett, the developer, is also involved in this scandal. That's four people involved in this corruption. You might say, J.T. Burnett isn't a government official, so it's not relevant. That's true. But I seem to remember a commissioner expressed an opinion that they had concerns about this project, but that since it was announced that J.T. Burnett was being brought in as a developer, all those concerns have been allayed, since J.T. is such a great guy and an asset to our community. That J.T., he's a wonderful fellow. I don't remember what commissioner it was, but it might have been Commissioner Redacted. The FBI might want to take into a look at Commissioner Redacted. I noticed a lot of politicians have started stating their preferred pronouns on their social media profiles, but I have yet to seen a politician announce that their preferred pronoun is Redacted. I pray none of you are ever known as Redacted.
I do, too.
Amen. And the corruption in our local government. We are number one in crime in more than one way. So please include a review of the Kalaran Country Club land use changes in your audit. And I'd like to thank Steve Stewart's Radio Show for letting me know about this meeting, this issue on the item on the agenda, on Tuesdays and Thursdays at eleven a.m. on ninety-three point three. It's a great show, and you keep up to date on local issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure Steve appreciates the shout-out as well. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Do we have anybody else in the audience that'd care to speak on an agenda item at this time? Seeing none, let's move on. We are at the appearances by city commission-appointed boards and committees and other governments. Do we have any appearances?
No, sir.
We are on the consent agenda. Have any items on the consent agenda been pulled?
No, sir.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor?
Consent agenda has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. No further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. We are now on eleven point oh one. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the appointment and update of bylaws for the Special Events Advisory Committee. There are two recommended actions. I'll read each for everyone's benefit. Option one includes the appointment of Delatory Hollinger to the committee with the term expiration of March two thousand twenty-two, the appointment of Ramira Hayes with the term expiration of March twenty twenty-two, and the reappointment of Alex Workman with the term expiration of March twenty twenty-two. That's option one. Option two is approved bylaws changed to specify the means by which the city commission will appoint members to the Special Events Advisory Committee. These items are recommended for your approval.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Excellent. Commissioners looking for direction.
Move options one and two, Mr. Mayor?
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. Eleven point oh two, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. This item, eleven oh two, involves an appointment to the Downtown Improvement Authority. I'd like to recognize our DIA Director, Elizabeth Emmanuel. She's here in attendance tonight. And the recommended action is to appoint Alexander Parker to the committee with a, authority, rather, with the term expiring May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clark?
No, sir.
Looking to the commission for discussion and direction.
Can we point out who he is?
Sure.
Okay.
Would you like to provide a comment or two? Please, come on, that'd be great. Thanks for joining us. Name and address, please, for the record.
Alex Parker, one-four-one-four, North Duval Street. I got linked up with Elizabeth. I'm working with North American Properties on the Cascades Development going in at Cascades Park. Sean McIntyre, who is our boss, had known Elizabeth for some time and was able to introduce me to Elizabeth, and it kind of seemed to all, you know, fall into place where there was a vacancy. I have been in Tallahassee since two thousand five, graduated from FSU in two thousand nine, and since then, been involved in real estate, buying student rentals over by campus. So I do own and manage quite a few student rentals myself, and definitely excited for this new venture with North American and what we're doing at Cascades Park. And when I started chatting with Elizabeth about what the DIA does and kind of their rebranding after a little bit of a history over the past few years, definitely excited to, you know, with everyone's blessing, to jump on board and really work to bring that sort of downtown destination of Tallahassee that I think we've all been working towards, but Tallahassee hasn't seemed to quite been able to deliver on that yet. So, you know, eager for the opportunity and kind of it in a nutshell.
Mr. Parker, thank you for your willingness to serve. Certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move staff recommendation?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. Eleven point oh three, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Item eleven oh three involves two appointments, two recommended appointments to the Environmental Board. Those are reappointment of Mr. Greg Gaskin with the term expiration of November two thousand twenty-two, and the reappointment of Mark Zubley, also with the term expiration of November two thousand twenty-two.
Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clark?
No, sir.
Are either of the gentlemen with us today, I know that they have served for some time, understand, looking to the commission for direction?
Acceptance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five to zero. We are on the introduction of ordinances. Madam Attorney, twelve point oh one, please.
Thank you. Item number twelve point zero one is the introduction of ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the two thousand thirty Tallahassee-Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for December fourth, two thousand nineteen, at six o'clock p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall, that the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clark?
No, sir.
This item does not require any action, but any comment? Moving on, twelve point oh two, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number twelve point zero two is introduction of ordinance number nineteen dash oh dash thirty-three, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections fourteen dash two point three zero two, fourteen dash two point three zero four, fourteen dash two point three seventeen, fourteen dash two point three three five, fourteen dash two point four oh two, fourteen dash two point four oh four, fourteen dash two point four seventeen, fourteen dash two point four three five, fourteen dash six point zero zero three, and creating sections fourteen dash five point zero one zero, fourteen dash six point zero zero seven, fourteen dash six point zero zero eight, and fourteen dash nine point zero three four of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to general employees and supplemental plan pension provisions, contributions, and withdrawals, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for December fourth, two thousand nineteen, at six o'clock p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall, that the record reflect the ordinance was introduced.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment?
We do have one speaker on this item, Mayor. That's William Blanton.
I'm sorry?
William Blanton.
Mr. Blanton?
And I believe that's the only speaker I have for any of the ordinance that's being introduced.
Mr. Blanton, thanks for joining us. We appreciate it. And when you ready, your name and address for the record, please.
All right, by the way, I hate standing in front of crowds reading this way. I'm much better at ad-libbing things.
Name and address, please.
However, this presentation, yes, sir. It's William Blanton, twenty-one twenty-one, Heaven's Court. And I'm much better at ad-libbing than I am reading verbatim. However, this is kind of a stat-heavy, that's why I gave you the condensed version. I've been dispatching since October twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-one. That makes twenty-eight years and a few days. I am a public safety communications operator, also known as a communications training officer or more colloquially known as a nine-one-one dispatcher. I'm here to speak for you about two related subjects, one specifically, as presented, the proposed change to the drop, which is section fourteen-two dot three-three-five, and then by extension, the retirement aspect of dispatch. I do want to start on a positive note. The drop program, fantastic. It's a game changer, without a doubt. It's a wonderful concept, and it helps to maintain a well-trained staff and allows for a more relaxed retirement. You don't have to stress as much. But I feel that these proposed changes takes a little notch out of that. Some background, the data, as I said, is in front of you. First of all, there is a national movement, started in Texas recently with West Virginia, California's on board with it, with the reclassification of nine-one-one dispatchers to reflective first responders, with all the benefits, as it were, that comes with it. Some things you already know, standard retirement is the, for my generation, thirty years, two and a quarter percent accrual. And it's based on, and here's where the numbers start kicking in, and I'll give them to you steady and quick. Read it later, it's going to make life a lot easier. Standard retirement for a general employee, which is how we are classified, is two thousand and eighty hours per year. If you take it out to the full extent, it's sixty-four thousand and some change. That's your thirty-year retirement. Our current schedule, we work a twelve-hour shift. Our base schedule is a thirty-six forty-eight schedule, so we have overtime every two weeks, standard. Not a big deal. One year, that's a hundred and four hours more than your general service employees. If that was all we were doing, eh, not a problem. I wouldn't even be standing here, because it's not a big deal. But because of the type of job we're in and the national lack of nine-one-one dispatchers, there is a shortage nationwide. So we don't work the thirty-six forty-eight schedule. We work a schedule that has mandatory overtime. That mandatory overtime can be one shift a month, it can be seven, eight shifts a month. Right now, I think we're averaging, eh, maybe three, three a month. So, to save some time on this, because I know I've only got the three minutes, and I'm twenty-five seconds down, three shifts a month, that's four hundred and thirty-two extra working hours per year, ten point eight extra weeks a month- weeks a month. Or at a 30-year retirement, that's 7.73 years longer than your standard general service employee. But there are 40 hours, an hour plus, plus seven, eight weeks. In the long run, it doesn't equal up. So the chart in the center breaks it down. One shift, two shift, three shift, four shift. The ongoing issue, everyone here, either you directly or a family member, is likely to either dial 911 or know someone who has. We take almost 600,000 calls a year. That's just in Tallahassee alone. What's the answer? I don't truly know. I've listed six down there, and I'll name them quick. Leave it up for you to discuss later. Number one...
Blanton, you could work with me and list the six.
Yes.
So that we can move on.
Leave cola into the drop accumulation. Number two, increase accrual rate to reflect something a little closer to what the first responders receive. My number three is my favorite, the week-for-week retirement. Equivalent number of hours equals 30 years. When you've hit that for the mandatory, you have served your time. Number four, at 20 years, increase the accrual rate from the 2 and 1/4% to something a little bit higher, not necessarily to the full 3% that officers receive. Number five, increase the leave accumulation to balance the 12-hour shifts. That's a whole nother topic. And number six, and probably the second most important one, if not the most, is to let's start a conversation about classifying public safety communications operators as first responders, because we are the first first responders.
First of all, thank you for your service. We certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any other speakers on this item.
Okay, Mr. Blanton, this will go to a public hearing as well at the December meeting, correct?
December 4th.
December 4th. So, excellent, thank you. Requires no action. Any comment from my colleagues? Seeing none, we move on to policy formation and direction.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on 12.03.
Yes. So item number...
How could I forget this one?
12.03, introduction of ordinance number 19-0-36, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Article 1, Division 3 Ethics Code, Division 4 Ethics Board, and Article 8 Lobby's Regulations of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for December 4, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall, that the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Excellent. I, for one, am very excited about this.
One more item. One more item on this item, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so also, in that item, you'll see an option two, which includes approval of a policy recommendation of the Independent Ethics Board. Their staff developed a contact track provision for inclusion in procurement contracts above a specified level authorizing the voidability of a procurement contract where improper influence has been shown. So we are asking for direction or approval of that recommendation.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on option two?
We do not.
Excellent. Looking for direction from the commission.
Move options one and two.
Options one and two have been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow.
Confusion.
That's for lack of a second. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Okay. I thought we were just introducing this?
Yes, we've already introduced it. So it's really option two. So I'm looking for a direction on option two.
Okay.
Move option two, Mr. Mayor.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. I'll second the motion on the table. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are now on policy formation and direction. All right, colleagues, it's 4:55. We're going to roll till we hit 5:30. At 5:30, Ashley Edwards, our Director of Parks for Recreation, has a special presentation before we break for dinner. And then we'll come back at 6:00. We'll have the public hearing. We'll take care of any policy formation that's left after that and finish the meeting. Sound good? We're on item number 13.01, Mr. Cook.
Mayor and commissioners, in non-election years, the city commission selects a mayor pro tem in its first regular November meeting. As you know, City Commissioner Curtis Richardson has served this past year as mayor pro tem. And so at this time, it is up to you to select a replacement for Commissioner Richardson to serve as mayor pro tem for the next year.
Sounds great. First of all, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Seeing none. Let me personally state that the first year as mayor of the City of Tallahassee, this has been a very interesting year. And Curtis, you have done a tremendous job as the mayor pro tem. I tell people all the time that we have made it a tremendous leadership team. I love working with you. You've done a great job. You've been a great mentor. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, too, have enjoyed working with you and my colleagues on the commission, and am just extremely impressed with how quickly you guys have come up to speed and the work that you've done individually and us as a commission. And have proud, and am thankful that you all gave me the opportunity to serve as a mayor pro tem for a second year while you all came up to speed. But I'm extremely happy to have been a part of the leadership team over the past year and looking forward to working with our new leadership team. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Commissioner Diane Williams Cox as our next mayor pro tem.
I'll second that.
We will do a collective second. We will do a collective second. Commissioner Williams Cox, are you willing to accept the nomination?
I will be honored.
Excellent. Any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Absolutely.
And don't think that you're not going to continue to mentor.
Oh, yeah.
We expect you to continue to mentor us, but thank you. I look forward to the opportunity to serve.
Excellent.
Look forward to working with you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to make a great team. Any further comment?
You've got to sit over there now.
Is the candy any better over there?
It's not. The water is colder.
Motion on the table is for Commissioner Diane Williams Cox to serve as the mayor pro tem for the 2019-2020 year, properly seconded by the rest of the commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, item number 13.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Collier Brown introduced this well earlier, so I'll just add a little more background to this. At your July 10 meeting, Commissioner Williams Cox, having learned of a similar program elsewhere in the United States, suggested that we consider an idea where we would take parking ticket revenues and we would dedicate those to the school systems, in this case, the Leon County Schools Foundation, so that they could provide school supplies for underserved areas. And so I'll be honest with you, she stayed on me about this so that we could think about how we would do it. We wanted to make sure we could administer it in a way that made sense. We worked through the issue, and we are recommending that you authorize us to donate parking citation revenues collected from December 2 through December 6 this year, and donate those to the Foundation for Leon County Schools to support the purchase of school supplies for students in Title I schools. We would go through the accounting process, make sure we count it right, and then in January, present the donation to the Leon County Schools Foundation.
Wonderful. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Excellent. Let me start off comments by saying Commissioner Williams Cox, excellent job. This is true leadership. This is creative thinking. This is thinking outside of the box. And, you know, quite honestly, what we usually take as a negative, violations, you're turning it into a positive. I think that this is fantastic. If I could make the motion, I'd make it myself, but I'm going to give you the honor of making the motion for staff recommendation. And then I'm sure you will get a second, and we'll continue on with comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Excellent. And we will collectively second. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on...
That's a teacher in the audience.
There you go. 13.03, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, this is action on a city commission policy 130, structure and management of the city commission office staff. It's a policy that's been in place for many years, hasn't been updated in quite some time, though. By the language of the policy itself, when the city commission takes action, they're automatically incorporated, and it was simply time to update the document to reflect changes that have been made over time. We believe it currently, it reflects the current operation of your offices, and therefore, anybody who goes to the website looking at city policies will see this and see what's current. We recommend it for your approval as updated.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Dr. Bryant. Commissioner Bryant, seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. 13.04, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to invite Ben Adjatayu, our Director of Sustainability and Community Preservation, to come forward. I'll tee this up, but I'd like her to give us a few minutes of background on this topic. This is really a good news story.
Sure is.
You know, we constantly look for grant opportunities to bring money to our community that can benefit us overall, whether it's the quality of life or whatever issue we're dealing with. And you know vacant lots are a source of neighborhood blight, and being proactive helps us advance our quality of life. We've been awarded, with your acceptance, $150,000 grant from the Knight Foundation with no match, and that's difficult to do, and that's thanks to Ben and her leadership. So I would like to ask her just to kind of walk through what we would use the money for and how that would benefit Tallahassee.
All right. Thank you, City Manager, and thank you all for the opportunity to share with you very briefly. We're excited to talk with you today about a program that we're calling Vacant to Vibrant. Our department, the department I have the honor of leading in sustainability and community preservation, it actually brings together three new divisions in a new family, and I think it works really well. Both our sustainability efforts, our resilience effort, and you all approved our first-ever plan back in July, and our code enforcement team. And what that allows us to do is look at new opportunities and ways that we can address strategic priorities that we might otherwise not look for. And so one thing that we paid particular attention to, and we know it's on your hearts and many of our communities' hearts, is our vacant properties. There are quite a few, and being vacant in and of itself is not a negative thing. But what we're trying to do with this program is to create new ways to reimagine some of these spaces. How do we create, take blighted properties and turn them into something more creative, but also incentivize and maybe inspire other development that can occur according to the different priorities we have, whether that's housing in the future, or a park, or whatever the case may be? We see this really as a huge opportunity, and there are quite a few around the community. So I'll talk briefly about just our vacant lots that are available and how we're thinking about this. And then our final slide will describe what we're proposing as a pilot program through this grant. There are plenty of vacant parcels throughout the city. We just show right here the urban core, really, and these are neighborhoods that you know we're already working very closely with, whether it's in Griffin Heights, Frenchtown, or Greater Bond neighborhood. Altogether, there are over 800 vacant lots. You've heard earlier today, there are ones that are city-owned parcels. There are ones we look at that are well-positioned to be developed for affordable housing, but there are others that are easements. There are others that are, most of them actually are private property that is held by landowners, whether they're here or elsewhere. But the field is ripe in terms of space that is available to redevelop, to reimagine, and to do wonderful things with. What happens when they languish, though, is the negative, right? It's the nuisance that we hear often about, particularly in code enforcement. We have issues of illegal dumping, overgrowth, public nuisances, and really spaces that can also attract criminal activity. And so these issues are all interconnected, and we're paying attention to them as we look at our strategic priorities altogether in various lenses. And so our goal with this project is to look at how, through our code enforcement opportunities, through our environmental sustainability program, we can reimagine these spaces and turn these blighted properties into new community amenities. You, as I've mentioned, you've just adopted your community resilience plan. There are strategies in there that directly tied to this kind of strategy. We are working with Frenchtown and their placemaking. We've done Greater Bond. All of these strategies have identified vacant lots as a unique opportunity to revitalize our neighborhoods. And so this is right in line with what you've told us. Some of you participated in one kickoff event where we painted with some ladies in a downtown volleyball court, and that was just the beginning. I didn't pick that paint, but the store sells it, and I think it's perfect. But there are ways that we can come together with partners to reimagine spaces. And what I want to stress, too, is that we want to look for temporary opportunities to revitalize these spaces, again, to not say that we're turning every vacant lot into a mural or to a pocket park or to whatever. But we do want to say that we're paying attention to our neighborhoods. We don't want blight. There are folks that care about the space, and as we beautify it and as we invest in it, we believe that it will attract positive development in these communities. So that's in that spirit that the Vacant to Vibrant has been developed. What this grant funds and what the Knight Foundation is particularly excited about is how we might add another element to our vacant program where we would focus on entrepreneurship and encourage and train folks into a new source of revenue for them through urban farming, but also to create an incubator network where vacant lands can be made available for new entrepreneurs to test out this new venture in our community. We mash that up with training so we can give them business skills and tools and resources so they can launch off on their own and move on into their ventures. So we're not going to be running these businesses at all, but we want to create the kind of environment that supports new entrepreneurs in this new area, which is urban agriculture. This project will only be possible through community partnerships that we have, and so the proposal was written to include partners such as our Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University, that of course has expertise in agriculture, our local partners like Domi Station, that has already done some groundwork on building up entrepreneurs, but most importantly, our neighborhood leaders, because we want to create amenities that reflect the vision that neighbors want for where they live. And so it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's not that every idea will fit well in a particular block, but we want to work in tandem with these neighborhoods and say, this parcel would do well to have this kind of asset. And as they do that, perhaps it will inspire and motivate additional development. That captures the summary of what the pilot is, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. By the way, you're knocking it out of the park. Great job. Yeah, this is wonderful. Mr. Cook, do we have any public speakers on this item?
We do not.
Excellent. Looking for direction from the commission.
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation to accept $150,000. Mr. Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, due to mayor pro tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much. Item number 13.05, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item is a request for you to authorize Star Metro to accept $275,000 in local agency program funds from the Department of, Florida Department of Transportation with no matching funds required, similar to the prior. The funds will be used to hire a consultant to perform an environmental analysis, known as NEPA, on the property at the northwest corner of Orange Avenue in Meridian. It is the first step in the process of building a transit facility. We've called it the Super Stop. I believe what we're calling it a Transit Center now, but it's going to be good, I promise you. And these dollars are certainly welcome from the Florida Department of Transportation. Angela Baldwin and her team are here. Angela, they're doing a great job. Angela, will you ask your team to also stand? They're a little bashful, they didn't want to stand, but I'd like to recognize them. They're doing a great job, really giving us good leadership.
Really are.
And we're asking for your approval of this item.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
No speakers.
I am looking for direction in a motion.
I would move option one, Mr. Mayor, and also say that...
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Temp, and I will second that motion. Your floor, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm excited about this because this was a pet project of mine as a member of the Sales Tax Committee.
Yes, sir.
We spent two years vetting projects, lots of community input, and certainly this was one of those that rose to the top, and it was also chosen, Commissioners and Mayor, as one of those that we would advance funds. So it will be, and that's why, partly why this is being brought to us now, it will happen in the next five years. As you all know, that area now is a temporary park, and so that's where this transfer facility will be. It will make transportation around the community better for many of those who are typically use our transportation system as their way to get to work, at home, and to recreational activities throughout the city. And so I'm excited about this and certainly look forward to us moving ahead and accepting this grant from the Department of Transportation as a first step in the process of making this project come to fruition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And properly moved by the Mayor Pro Temp, seconded by the Mayor. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Mr. City Manager, 13.06, please.
Thank you, sir. This item requests your approval to acquire the property at 2503 Jackson Bluff Road. We generally know that as the Rose Printing Property. It's approximately seven, almost seven and a half acres with more than 100,000 square feet of building. We have been looking for extra space. As you know, the Lake Bradford Road location, which we've talked about as a potential future site for our police station, we were removing the employees from there. We had hoped to locate them somewhere in or around the Jackson Bluff complex where we have most of their peers, and this certainly is a great opportunity for us. We had entered into conversations a long time ago with the owner. They didn't work, the price was frankly too high. Unfortunately, the business fell into bankruptcy, and now trustee holds it. And so we have the opportunity to buy it for $1.3 million. Again, this would allow us to co-locate our employees in our underground utility and public information, our public infrastructure department, and we're seeking your approval. Let me recognize Renetta Marshall, our General Manager of the Department. She's done a very good job. She has a really good business acumen, I will tell you. As this came up, she kind of led the charge, and I think certainly has crafted a good option to consider.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any comment on this item?
We do not have comment on this item.
All right. I'm looking for comment, I'll weigh in. I think this is an incredibly smart management move by bringing everybody under one roof, and I love the logistical aspects with all the materials and the equipment that we use as well. Creative thinking. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, as we look at the option of locating the police campus, we would need that Lake Bradford space for that, so this is a very proactive approach to doing that, and it helps bring people under one roof, which creates good working relationships, I believe.
Absolutely.
So I move the acceptance of the staff recommendation.
Properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Temp. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Number 13.07, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This is our requisite scooter item for the evening. We're deep into the scooter pilot program. You'll recall back in September, you directed staff to issue a request for information to fill a spot in the pilot program that was vacated by Gacha. That was conducted, there were five responses. They were in alphabetical order: Bolt, Razor, Slider, Transit, and Wheels. The responses were viewed by many departments, and at the conclusion of that, staff is recommending that Wheels be allowed to participate in the program. The pilot ends in March, or March 15, 2019. Prior to the conclusion of that, I would anticipate we would bring you an item back to consider taking a permanent action on the ordinance. And so that's the lay of the land. Separately, I sent you an email just before this meeting. We learned today that Lime, which is one of the participants, is withdrawing from the market, so they've elected to withdraw. That's their option in the pilot. I want to make sure you're aware of that. You know, we didn't know about it till today, so I just want to make sure that information's made available to you and the public. So our recommendation at this point is to authorize and recommend Wheels to participate in the e-scooter pilot program that would end March 15, 2019.
Sounds great. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
We do not.
Okay. I'm looking for direction or comment.
Question, well...
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Comment. With this information about Lime dropping out, we seem to be having some issues with keeping five vendors in place. I was exposed to another vendor who has a bicycle option. I thought was a real good option of, you know, battery-operated bicycle, that you can fold and put in your car and travel with you. I would ask, you know, I'm looking at Madam Attorney, I don't want to get in any trouble or anything, could we just not bring that particular vendor online so that we have, for the duration of this pilot, five vendors that we're working with? I haven't said their name yet, so I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, they did participate, so they were a part of the process. Certainly, if it's your will, they can be brought on as the will of the Commission. I do think that probably your statement regarding the ability to keep five, there's something to be thinking about as you decide in the future what you want for the City of Tallahassee.
I think that we keep the conversation going to another meeting. It's only appropriate to have e-scooters on every meeting since the pilot started. And have, you know, if it's your interest to have an agenda item be brought back on the other, formally introducing the company to the rest of the Commission to round it out to five. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, and then Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would support that. I also had an opportunity to observe, I didn't participate on the scooter or the bike, but I did observe both of those alternative methods of transportation. And I think what it does add is the e-bikes, the motorized bicycles, which we haven't had. And so it gives us an opportunity to take a look at that, as well as an alternative mode of transportation for our community. And so I would agree with taking a look at adding that company, for that reason, to our list of authorized vendors for the e-scooters. I think it adds another element to what we can offer our community.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
So yeah, I've ridden five different brands of scooters. Our wheels came with a scooter with a seat, which I thought was pretty cool, then somebody brought a trike that had three wheels, and I had an opportunity to ride the e-bike. You know, I think all probably serve different types of demographics. I thought the bikes are really cool, that you could actually get a decent speed going up hills in Tallahassee. You know, was apprehensive about previous bike share programs, just because I don't like to bike up hills and challenge with it. I thought it was cool how easily you get around town on some of those. I would support definitely a motion that would bring e-bikes to town.
Commissioner Bryant?
No further comment.
Okay. I am looking for direction. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we bring back at our next meeting a recommendation to consider...
About option number one, and then a recommendation to also...
Okay, option, oh yeah, right.
Because we'll have two options, basically.
I'll move option number one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
And then to bring back an item at the next meeting...
Right.
To consider...
Another option.
Slider, as our next vendor for the e-scooter and electric bike.
All right, so you want to be company-specific to bring back?
Yes.
Okay. The motion on the table is for option number one, and to also bring back an agenda item at the December 4 meeting, recommending Slider after being fully vetted to join the program as well, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. 13.08, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Christian Doolan to go ahead and come forward, so we'll keep this moving. I think we're doing well. You know, over the last 10 months, that's your direction. The staff has had their head down putting together a strategic plan, working with the departments, working directly with you and getting your feedback in particular. I would like to call out Commissioner Bryant, who has a certain skill set here and expertise, and certainly has been welcomed. We like the free labor that we get from you, Commissioner. But it really has been a good exercise. I think it gets us focused where we're headed. It has a five-year horizon and sets some really firm targets and initiatives. And so I'd like, Christian, just to add a few comments on that and seek your approval to adopt the five-year strategic plan.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, in January, you charged staff with developing the five-year strategic plan, and in nine short months, we've been able to produce a draft of the organization's first plan, seven goals, 27 objectives, 135 targets mapped to achieve your vision. I would like to acknowledge my team, who's in the room, if you could stand up. So Diane is over there, Anna, Justin, and Jason, they've been working very hard to do this swiftly. They continue to get approached by other communities on our approach to doing this, and I would like to acknowledge them. Thank you. I have also had the privilege of working with one of the strongest leadership teams of any city in the state. They have been tireless and restless to make sure. They've been supporting this initiative. You've heard through the workshop and items today already, callouts to tie-ins to the items that have been suggested for the targets in the strategic plan. So it's an honor and privilege to serve with them and really stand in the middle of a great team. Since the last meeting, we've incorporated feedback that we've received from the community and one-on-one work with you, and today we're very excited to present this final draft. Where do we go from here? We intend to make this strategy live in a number of ways. First, we're looking at January's annual retreat and year-in-brief that would provide those baseline measures that we would start to measure across the five-year duration of this plan. Additionally, we're looking at a launch campaign that would make this information readily available to the community in an ongoing fashion over the duration of the plan. And we're also considering timing of reviews of both strategic priorities and the budget process to make sure you're able to make decisions with that vision and the targets in line. We're excited, very excited for the adoption of the plan and look forward to your direction.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not have comment on this item.
Mr. Doolan, let me tell you, you and your team have done a fantastic job over the past 11 months. This is, one of our top priorities was putting together a strategic plan for this Commission. Y'all did an amazing job, and we certainly do appreciate it. Dr. Bryant, thank you. Thanks for your leadership on this issue. You are an expert in this field, you helped guide us through this process, and you did a tremendous job, and we appreciate it. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Williams-Cox. Get your hand up.
I do. I wanted to, at the last meeting, I wanted, I said, I got a little giddy about the Status of Women and Girls strategic plan, and I said some things that I want, and I apologized to our team independently and individually, but I want to apologize publicly to say that you all have done an outstanding job. By no means did I mean to say that a woman had to do this, but you all have done an outstanding job, and I truly apologize for even saying that. I know you probably don't even care about that, about what I said, I was just being giddy, but it matters to me. And I don't like to say stuff and then apologize under the cloak of darkness. I want to come back to the scene of the crime and apologize to you and your team. You all have done an outstanding job.
Yes.
You've taken, how many plans? Forty-four plans, I think you said?
Yes, ma'am.
And you brought it in with beautiful pictures of people in our community and people on our staff, and you've made it readable, easy to read, big print for those of us over, you know, that need the big print. You all have done a great job, and I truly apologize for being a little over the top last time. All right.
Commissioner Bryant, I think it is appropriate for you to make the motion, if you are so inclined.
Be glad to do that. Let me first commend the team that has worked on this, and I've told them that this is really a process that does not end this year. Next year, we'll be looking at it again, and we'll continue to refine it year in and year out. But for where we are today, my congratulations really to all of you, not just the team, but also the City of Tallahassee and its leadership, which was a critical part of getting us to where we are today. So I gladly recommend staff recommendation.
And I would be more than happy to second, along with my colleagues, the motion on the table. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, did you have any comment?
No.
Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, our strategic plan passes five-zero.
Here, here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doolan. We certainly appreciate it. Okay, before we take a break, I would love to recognize Ms. Ashley Edwards, our Director of Park Recreation, for a very special presentation, and then after the presentation, we will go ahead and break for dinner and come back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to present to you, Mayor and Commissioners, this evening the graduates of our 2019 Neighborhood Leadership Academy, and we'd love it, we're going to call some of them up for a picture, so we'd love it if you might want to join us down here. The citizens that are in this group, there's about 20 of them, they come from all over our community, they're neighbors in our neighborhoods, and they've spent two hours, two to three hours a night, every Tuesday night for the past eight weeks, spending time with different areas of our city government. The program is designed by our staff in our Neighborhood Affairs Division, and is presented in collaboration with many, many, many other city departments and other city employees. But it's designed to provide the folks in the academy with a thorough understanding of government operations, the wide scope of city services and programs that are available to our residents, as well as to teach them the variety of ways that you can access city news and information. The goal of the academy is to engage the residents and ensure that they're well-informed when it comes to the inner workings of the city, so that as neighborhood leaders, they can share this knowledge with their respective neighborhoods. They really become ambassadors for us, and our goal is for them to remain active and remain engaged. This is an interactive course. For those of you that think you might want to do this in the future, know that it's just not sitting in a classroom setting. Some of the things that they've gotten to do over the course of this fall, they've helped put out a car fire with the Fire Department, they've learned about tactical apprehension methods with TPD, they've been able to appear on camera in front of the green screen with our Communications Department, and last but not least, they've learned how to play pickleball. With that, I'd like to call up, I'm going to read out all the names. A few of them couldn't be with us tonight, but I'd like to call up those that are here, if they'd please join us up front. Ramona Abernathy-Payne, Janelle Brown, Robert Courtney, Kristen Coyne, Warren Ellis, Glene Hampshire, Alan Hill, Ray Holloway, Sylvia Hubbard, Keith Humphrey, Mary Lester, Sean Nyberg, Lisa Orcutt, Annette Pompey, Ray Roa, Marsha Turner, Jenny Vickers, Sandra Williams, Demetrius Whitehead, and Sean Youngblood. Your 2019 Neighborhood Leadership Academy graduates, let's give them a hand. My apologies, yes. Willie Jackson, please join us. I'm sorry, we left you off. How could we do that? How could we do that? I'm so sorry. And we've got some folks that want to take a picture there.
Anybody from the class wants to, anybody, the class president?
Let me ask our Neighborhood Affairs staff that are here to come forward, too. John Baker, Leanne Watts-Williams, Lisa Galosi.
All right, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting from right here. We will take the dinner break and be back at 6 o'clock for the public hearing. We will then finish the rest of policy formation. Let's go ahead and move forward with item number 15.01, please.
Item number 15.01 is the second and final public hearing on ordinance number 19-0-22, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Tallahassee Land Development Code, adding funeral homes to the list of permitted principal uses in the light industrial M1 zoning district, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we have one speaker on item 1501, that is Sarah Taylor.
Taylor, are you here?
And if you'll come to this microphone in the center here, you'll have three minutes, and I'll, there is a light that'll turn green, yellow, and red, and I'll give you a heads-up. But if you'll give your name and address...
Name and address for the record, please.
Sarah Taylor, 466 Frank Shaw Road, 32312.
You may begin.
And I'm for this. I am in the business, and this allows us to operate a funeral home and a crematory together in one location, which sounds like a normal thing, and you would always expect that to happen, but that's not so. The current zonings don't allow that, except for, I think, in one area. And obviously, in a growing town as Tallahassee, even if you are allowed in that area, sometimes you can't afford the spot, or there are no spots available. So this opens up quite a bit more opportunity for us. I also think, obviously, there's a growing need for more funeral homes in the area as our population grows and ages, so we've seen a lot of senior centers and, you know, homes open up. I've got to go somewhere, so I'm for it, and I really appreciate all the work that Bill Pobley's done on this, and Karen, and everybody at Growth Management. He's done a lot of research, I know. He's been in constant contact with me on his research in areas, other areas of Florida that have funeral homes in a more broad zoning, so I think they've done a lot of work on it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No other speakers on 1501.
Great. Ms. Taylor, thank you for coming out, we appreciate it. Full disclosure, Ms. Taylor's son has some of the best hands in Tallahassee Parks and Recreation. Flag football as wide receiver, and let me draw the connection here, our boys played flag football together. as wide receiver. And let me draw the connection here. Our boys played flag football together and our defensive coordinator, Coach Cook, is Mr. Cook's son.
Oh, gosh, okay.
Oh, my God.
It's very familiar without context.
So he gets his hands from his father, who was an athlete himself.
There you go. He was. Thank you for coming out. Any comments looking for direction, Commissioners?
Boo staff recommendation.
Properly moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by the mayor. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, you got your hand up, Commissioner? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 15.02, please.
Item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 19-Z-18, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, changing the zoning classification of land from commercial parkway CP and manufactured home and single-family detached residential R5 to Capitol Hill Plaza Plan Unit Development, PUD, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public speakers on this item?
Roger Nguyen is the only speaker we have on this item.
Yes, sir. Good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Roger Nguyen. I'm the engineer of record for the project, more bass consulting. I'm just here to answer questions, should you have some?
Great. Thank you. Seeing no further public comment. I'm looking for direction and comment from the Commission.
Boo staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by everybody else. Seeing no further comment. All those, I'll be of record for the second, I guess. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have anything else on the scheduled public hearing? Okay, we are back on item number 13.0, oh, this closes the advertised public hearing. We are now back on item number 13.09, under policy formation direction. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick and I'm going to turn it over to Christian. At your last workshop, you asked that we bring back an item for you to consider to create a committee focused on your priority area of poverty. And so we've put together an agenda item for your consideration that talks about the different forms of committees that you could create, the pros and cons, and really looking for your direction of what you would like that committee to do. So Christian, please fill in the gaps for me on this topic.
Sure. Thank you, Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. So on October 16th, you requested that we provide detail on committee structures or alternatives to support the work on impact of poverty, the priority area in our community. This item details structures of both citizen committees, advisory boards, as well as working groups, which are two ways that we historically and currently work to address areas of interest. Additionally, our strategy in the area of impact of poverty identifies four objectives focused on education, skill building, housing, and health. And there are 22 targets and initiatives there. So one of the, one of the points of the discussion, staff does request direction on the focus on whether this committee should move forward, be focused on the strategic planning goals, or any kind of identifying new initiatives as well. And then the item also details some of the distinctions and nuances between the advisory committees and working groups. We're here to answer any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Excellent. Looking for direction. Comment, Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, well, thank you for the update. I mean, it was, I believe the conversation last time kind of revolved around all of the priority areas and how we could be more involved with them. So what I would be looking for is something more in line with the target issue committees that we used to have, to take a more hands-on approach, but also just open to maybe just bringing back how, if that was successful in the past and how that worked, but also open to feedback from colleagues.
I'm comfortable where we are with the strategic plan. I'm not interested in creating another level of bureaucracy. I think we've identified where we want to go. I think we can pull in issue area experts through the universities, the college, the nonprofits, and even the business sector. As we need to go, I'm hesitant to create another structure right now, as we have just approved the strategic plan right before the dinner break. I think we should take a step, a deep breath, think about the next move and move forward from there. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I would want to, I too don't want to create something that we may or may not need, but I want to make sure that we're making sure that in our strategic plan, we're going to put all this under the umbrella because we got to be intentional if we're planning to have impact on poverty. And we have been being intentional. And I want us to, want to make sure we keep that in front of us and continue to be intentional. And I'm okay with it being handled with the strategic plan, but we just want to make sure that it's intentional. But I'd like to reserve the opportunity that if we feel that we need a break off or focus on poverty, that we are able to do that at a later time.
Sure. Any further comment? Motion, well, there's not even a recommendation. Madam Attorney, do you need any vote of any type? If there's no motion on the table, or what would be the?
Just to accept the report is presented.
Guys, are you motion to accept the report is presented?
So moved.
Properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are now moving on to item 13.10. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask interim chief outlaw to come forward. I've added this item, a public safety update. I think it's probably helpful to have updates periodically based on current events from our police department. And Chief Outlaw's done an outstanding job of moving the department forward. We've got things that wouldn't necessarily be shared, that wouldn't necessarily require approval of the city commission, or the thing that should be shared. So we have a few topics we want to talk about tonight, and Chief Outlaw's going to provide that update.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. And the City Manager and I have spoken about it. It'd be very beneficial, one for the public safety updates periodically, and then also just some orientation topics periodically. There's a lot of good things that we do. They're just latent. They're behind the scenes, behind the curtain, that nobody really knows about. And so we'll bring those to you periodically. And so I appreciate the opportunity, City Manager. First thing, I'd like to start off with, you know, sometimes there are sad anniversaries. And we all recognize that from hot yoga. You know, we just went to Memorial, and so November 2nd, it's always an anniversary for the population that had to endure, that was exposed to that. 9/11, you know, Doc Industries. You guys remember that? Well, today is one of those days for TPD. You know, 17 years ago, Sergeant Dale Green was taken, murdered in the line of duty. And so I just wanted everybody to pause and reflect on the fact that, you know, we have police officers working 24/7, willing to give their lives to sustain people's rights, their constitutional rights, freedom of speech, freedom of expression. And, you know, we take that for granted a lot of times, even I, you know, working administrative. Sometimes I forget what it's like, you know, to be out there. And so we just need to remember that. So thank you for that opportunity. Couple of things we're going to bring together tonight, real short. These are just updates on the Body Warm Camera Program, and also on some of our recruitment efforts. And on the Body Warm Camera Program, just kind of, just to reiterate, that was funded in part or chiefly by Department of Justice, because they recognized out of 21st century policing that, you know, police departments need to be more transparent, to maximize transparency. And so TPD wanted to get on board first in this whole region. And so we applied for the grant. To do that, you had to have a policy in place. And I'm proud to remind everybody that TPD was the first policy accepted nationwide by Department of Justice. And so we're definitely on the forefront for that. Couple of things that allows us to do, we never had the chance to do that before. We've had in-car cameras. That's an old technology. And we only have about 20 that's kind of held together with duct tape and bailing wire and stuff like that. But now we have the body worn cameras. It allows us to, one, we capture, we can archive, we set archival dates that can be, you know, from a treasurer clerk perspective, the automatic purge dates. And so we're, it's a very good deal for us, very secure system. Under a component of the Axon system that we utilize, and it's almost becoming a national standard, is we can also use it for taking evidentiary photos. Whereas used to, we had to have digital cameras, and everybody in the department, everybody in patrol had a digital camera. Now we can use the cell phone that it's installed on and take those pictures. We would always have the problem in the past, where we'd show up to a scene, it could be a robbery, it could be a burglary, it could be anything else. Officer, 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 I got it on my video. I've got video on my camera. Well, how do we get it off your camera into an evidentiary state that we can track and monitor? Now, under the same system that we acquired under the DOJ funding, is now we can take electronic files sent to us straight into this Axon system. It's very secure, archival, purgable. And so, and it's treated just as evidence, just like anything else in a chain of custody. And so that's been a very good thing. We're looking to, again, I told you, the mobile cameras in the vehicles. There, it's an old technology. It's not supported by current Windows, for example. And so hopefully another year or two, we'll look at expanding and putting the, again, acquiring the mobile video capabilities back in the cars under the same Maxon platform. And so everything will be stored together. Just a little update on recruitment. You know, we still hold, just as the whole national trend, everybody runs around 10 to 15. Some local agencies are running about probably 30 to 40% below their normal staffing. We're running around 10 to 11%. And so right now, we have 44 vacancies of all sworn, everything from the chief down to the line officer. And so one of the things I tell a lot of folks, and a lot of you folks have heard me say this in the past, we police in the society we have, not that we wish we had. We hire from the society that we have, not that we wish we had. And I say that to kind of set the stage for some recruitment efforts that we recently made in the last couple of months. And before, about three or four months ago, part of the criteria to be a police officer is you could not have consumed cannabis in the last three years. We police in the society we have, not that we wish we had. And so what we've done, we've modified the eligibility to apply. The hiring standards are exactly the same. Same background investigation, the same psychological, the same medical, the same interview panels. Everything's the same. Now, what we've done is if you've experimented in the last year, okay, we can live with that. We just want to make sure it's not a lifestyle. Because in the city of Tallahassee, under safety-sensitive positions, it's zero tolerance for THC in your system. And so we do have to be careful of that. And so we'll always maintain that as a city standard. Some things we, some more things we've done, used to, when I applied 32 years ago, 32 and a half years ago, when I applied, you had to have two years of college. And that was the workforce. Two years, four years, masters, juris doctorate, that's what TPD had. We hire from the society we have, not that we wish we had or used to have. A lot of folks are going into the vocations. A lot of folks have valuable life experience. And so recently, we lowered that to one year in a combination of either formal education or combination of law enforcement experience or military experience. And again, and that's broadened the scope of what we can do. We're looking at expanding our recruitment efforts. We are now discussing a recruitment and retention committee, and that that will be formed by two subgroups. One subgroup is internal, that will deal with retention and recruitment issues. And then the external work group will be of citizens across sections, business, education, and faith-based, and just to get their input and use them for their input, and also as a force multiplier to help share the word of what we do in law enforcement. You don't see too many pipeline entries any longer coming out of high school into the public safety and public security sectors. And so there's some more efforts that we'd like to even start to plant the seed at the high school level, and that, you know, public safety and public work is a good thing. And so we want to try to highlight those particular things there. And that is really about all I have for a public safety update. Any questions?
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
We do not.
Excellent. Let me start off by saying, first and foremost, Chief Outlaw, you have stepped up to the plate to serve as interim chief during the time of transition in the city of Tallahassee. Every time I get the opportunity, I thank you behind the scenes and also publicly. Thank you for your service to TPD. Thank you for what you do, and I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you each and every day.
Right.
Any other comment? And the appropriate motion will just be a motion to accept the report that is provided. But Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I too want to say thank you for your service. And for those of you who may not be aware, last week, I believe it was, at Rickards High School, Jackie Perkins sponsored a program called Blast.
Blast.
And in that, in that room, in that media center at Rickards, was TPD, Leon County Sheriff's Office, the state attorney, the US attorney. There was a lot of law enforcement in that room. And the purpose was to work with these young people, to help them to desire, to want to go into law enforcement, or to help them communicate with one another better. And you may have seen it on, I think it was WCTV or WTXL, I can't remember which one. And to see those kids get an opportunity to put handcuffs on an officer, Officer Dame, the PIO allowed them to handcuff him, I believe. He's free right by now, right?
He, he.
Okay.
He had work to do.
Okay. But to see that, that was very interesting, and that was an opportunity that you don't get to see often. And I think that's going to go a long way in getting more of our young people interested in law enforcement by having those types of communications, so that there's mutual respect for one another.
It is. It's all about relationships. And I remind people all the time that, you know, we're the largest agency between Jacksonville and Pensacola. You know, we're 410 sworn positions. We're 410 humans, policing humans. And people should never forget the human element of what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Commissioner Williams-Cox makes a motion to accept the report, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We are on item number 13.11. Mr. Auditor.
13.11. As required by the City Commission Policy 104, this item seeks approval for the city auditor's annual audit plan. The development of this plan began in August and has continued over the past several months. As part of that process, we sought input from the public, management, and you, the commission. The proposed plan was discussed and reviewed and approved by the city's audit committee on, excuse me, October 31st. I know I've previously discussed the details of this audit plan with each one of you, but there's a couple of audits that I wanted to specifically bring your attention to. Earlier today, we held a workshop on housing, and we have a housing audit included as part of this audit plan. If you remember, the top two programs that were presented in that list was emergency home repairs and owner-occupied repairs. We previously performed an audit in those areas in 2008 and 2009, and we identified significant and numerous issues in those areas. And so we felt like it was time to go back and look and see if those issues have been addressed. We think it's a very timely audit. The other audit I want to bring to your attention, and I know this has been discussed very much, and the scope was approved as part of the October 16th commission meeting, was audit of certain contracts. And I just wanted to reassure each one, all of you, that if any additional information or evidence comes to our attention, those additional issues will be added to the audit. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have and seek approval for the fiscal year 2020 audit plan.
Dennis, as the auditor, this is your first opportunity to present the plan and we appreciate it. And special thanks to the audit committee that I know that you have been working with that brings back the recommendations. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We have no speakers.
Okay. I'm looking to the Commission for discussion and direction.
Move acceptance of the report.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox and seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13.12, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the contractual services for our security guards at this building and other select city facilities. It has been in a procurement process, and a vendor protest was lodged in that process. And questions in that process led to staff's concern in the recommendation before you tonight to avoid the current proposals, redo the process, and provide for a six-month contract extension with the firm in place to allow time to complete that process. Roberta McManus is our Assistant Director of Financial Services. She's leading the procurement group among other, many other things. She's doing a great job, and she's here to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment from Mr. Clerk?
No, sir. We do not.
Okay. I am looking to my colleagues for any questions or directions. Mayor Pro Tem moved staff recommendation, properly seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. 13.13, please, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is an approval of a revisions to City Commission Policy 142. This policy addresses the city of Tallahassee's relationships with sister cities. A couple of changes that are being proposed. One is the existing policy, as its language is phrased, the policy ends without specific reauthorization by the city commission, so it's become, can become stale. One, the change we've made there is to recommend a sunset review so that it has to come back to you for approval, approval or a
to you for approval, approval or adjustment every five years. Another change is that while the mayor's office takes the lead on these relationships, there are provisions for the sister cities and their committees that represent them to provide reports and information. We've changed that so that that information will come to the office of the city treasurer clerk rather than the mayor. That way, there's continuity of information, and it's all housed with the other records of the city. So we think that'll simplify things there. So the request is that you approve the revised policy. That's option one. Options two and three deal with specific sister city relationships. Option two identifies several cities, and our recommendation is that those relationships be deemed inactive, which is a provision of the policy. But it does give 60 days for those, those various city committees and relationships to contact us so that if they want to continue, we'll have an opportunity for communication. And then the third one recommends that you direct staff to follow up with St. Martin. As you know, we just recently had a meeting where we recognized and interacted with them, and so we just want to follow up on a couple of the formalities there. So that's the recommendation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Cook?
We don't.
All right. Looking for direction or comment?
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by the mayor, Pro Tim. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Do we have anything else to come before us, Mr. City Manager, under policy formation?
No, sir, we don't. But we did decide earlier today on the sister city relationship, it was, it was an ad hoc committee that we put together, and we decided that, that Thomas should have to visit the sister city. And in order to memorialize his visit there, he was going to get a tattoo for every place he visited. So we'll, we'll just put that out there. But that's all the policy items, sir.
Pictures, pictures.
Excellent. Okay. We are now on item 16.01, which is under agenda business speakers. This is the opportunity for the public to come and speak on any item that comes to mind. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor, and I think I may see another speaker form coming my way. The first speaker we have is Donna Cotterell, followed by Catherine Lane. I'll ask speakers, and Ms. Cotterell can come first to the center microphone. Each speaker has three minutes for remarks. The light is green, it'll turn yellow and red, but the mayor will provide you direction.
Great, wonderful. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Donna Cotterell. My address is 703 Osceola Street, and I am speaking on behalf of the conversion ban therapy. We had thought the ordinance was going to be proposed tonight, but it's not on the agenda. However, I am in favor of the city moving forward with an ordinance, perhaps before the state. We want to be proactive in making sure that our LGBTQIA youth are, are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Lane, and then Jules Bailey.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Lane. My address is 2001 Old St. Augustine Road here in Tallahassee. I am with Equality Florida's Transaction Advisory Council. I'm also a member of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, and I'm also here to speak about the conversion therapy ban that I believe will be dropped sometime soon. I specifically wanted to address two potential legal issues to the ban. Number one being pending legislation on conversion therapy in the legislature right now. There has been pending legislation in the Florida legislature since 2015. In that time, over 20 Florida communities have passed conversion therapy bans, primarily because the Florida legislature is not anticipated to pass it. They haven't passed it since 2015. The reason Florida has the most local jurisdictions of any state in the United States to pass local bans is because Florida, on the statewide level, is not anticipated to pass it. So local jurisdictions continuously move forward on it despite pending state legislation. And it is because local communities have always known that is the most expeditious and practical way to proceed. There is no reason to wait on the state legislature. The second thing is VASO v. Tampa. It was a recent federal district court case in Tampa. First thing to say, it only applies to Tampa, no other city. Second thing, the federal court departed from a mandatory doctrine of extension. Federal courts are not supposed to interpret state law, and it interpreted the implied preemption doctrine, which I'm sure you all know is a very state-specific doctrine by its very title. You have to guess at what the legislature was thinking and what they did not actually say. That is not a subject for federal courts to pronounce any judgment on. The city of Tampa is moving forward with an appeal. They feel very strongly the decision is wrong, and Tallahassee should be just as supportive of the LGBTQ community as Tampa is. Third thing is on the merits of the opinion itself, it says that the Chapter 491 specifically impliedly preempts this area because it regulates medical practitioners. That is incorrect because Chapter 491 itself, when it talks about disciplining practitioners for activities they take that they should not, it expressly states that it is setting a minimum standard. They're setting a floor, not a ceiling, on what practitioners should do. That leaves the area open for local ordinances to raise the bar. Over 20 other Florida communities have raised that bar, and Tallahassee should join them in being just as protective of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Jules Bailey. At this time, Mayor, that's the last speaker form I have.
Ms. Bailey, it's good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Jules Bailey. I live at 1919 Dossie Street. I'm also here to speak on the proposed ban, or what we hope will soon be the proposed ban, on conversion therapy. So you heard a little bit about the legal background already, but sort of the reason why we're bringing this forward and the reason why it's a good idea is that it's going to support the LGBTQ youth in our community. Conversion therapy is our, is, or conversion therapy even something that's called talk therapy is something that isn't really practiced by psychologists or, isn't really practiced by psychologists or a medical professionals, or that's easier to outlaw. What is practiced, what the people that do practice talk therapy more frequently would be religious counselors and other people outside of the medical profession. And what it really amounts to is a sort of psychological torture of LGBTQ youth. So you may have heard that there is a higher precedence of poor mental health, depression, suicide among LGBTQ people. But that incident is not, but the incidence of that in the community is not any higher than that of the general population when these people are in a supportive community. So you'll see it go, so I don't have the exact statistics for you based on the most recent studies, but you'll see it going from something like, from something, from a much higher percentage of LGBTQ youth, especially transgender youth that are suicidal, down to an amount that you'd expect out of the regular population. So it's something that we support, we feel very strongly about, and we want Tallahassee to set a good example and say that you will stand up and defend our LGBTQ children and to be proactive before the rest of the state of Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Lakey Love.
Ms. Love, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Lakey Love, 1511 Melvin Street. I'm also here today to talk about the city of Tallahassee putting forward an ordinance to ban conversion therapy and protect our youth. As was previously mentioned, the state of Florida has absolutely no protections for LGBTQIA+ people. Right now, in the state of Florida, by state law, you can legally fire someone for being LGBTQIA+. You can evict them from housing, and you can deny them service, including banking services and restaurants. There are no civil rights protections at the state level. And I have information for you all here in the, in the last... ...three years since President Trump has come into office, and we have, there's six stages of care of anti-LGBTQ policy discriminations, the hard-won rights fought to protect, especially LGBTQ youth. And the Department of Education and Health and Human Services and the military and others have been rolled back and have been eliminated at the executive level. And there's a decreasing number of protections for LGBTQ youth, including a president who is openly speaking out against the equality ban and in favor of these sort of oppressive and discriminative practices like conversion therapy. Conversion therapy in and of itself has been condemned by the American Psychiatric Association, the American Health Organization, and this happened close to 20 years ago. The, the policy ordinance that we're asking you all to put forward onto the schedule in the next commission meeting demonstrates how all of these organizations, these major medical and psychological organizations are speaking out against this. And according to the University of California School of Law in 2018, 6,908 people, so 698,000 people have suffered from conversion therapy. Suicide levels are almost quadrupled, depression rates go up, addiction rates go up. This is a public health crisis. And it is time that the city of Tallahassee join the, the rest of, of the Florida communities that welcome LGBTQIA people and protect their LGBTQIA+ youth from these sort of harmful practices. And we want to encourage all of you to step forward like the other 20 communities, regardless of any state legislation that might be on the table, regardless of pending trial cases, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
I have no additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay. So we have nobody else that is here this evening that wishes to speak on a non-adjented item?
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak on this particular item?
Well, we are about to go into Commissioner thoughts to lead us off.
Okay, okay.
It's all you.
All right. Thank you, Lakey and, and the other members to, for coming. Lakey and I started our day out talking this morning about this very issue. And I understand and I support. We absolutely want to make sure that civil rights, human rights, all those things in our children are protected. I want to ask our city attorney for some information on some of the, some of what was shared, as well as see if we can take a look at maybe for next commission meeting, and what could we, what could we do to strengthen our support for banning, having a ban on conversion? I, I've, I've learned, they've educated me on what it is, and I don't like it. So I want to, I want Tallahassee to be a leader, the leaders that we are. So I want Tallahassee to lead and, and do something very strong that will prevent this. So please advise us.
Certainly. And my perspective is only from a legal one. It is not about whether it's, it's a good position to take or not. My recommendation comes from just knowing that the state of the law, it is in a state of flux. As I, as the person spoke, there is a case out there in the middle district of Florida. It is not controlling on the city of Tallahassee, but it is persuasive authority. And it does provide that, you know, that the, the issue of conversion therapy or the process or practice is something that is preempted to the state. What the case did, and I think the, the rationale of the decision is sound, and it did speak of the persuasive, the pervasive nature of the regulation that is on public health and mental health, that is controlled by the state. It spoke also about the fact that generally, these local governments do not regulate in the area of mental health and physical health. It spoke also of other areas that were substantially controlled by the state, such as issues of privacy, issues of relationships between parents and children. Also, the issue of informed consent. That is a very, an area that is highly regulated and is, a lot of case law on when there is informed consent. And all these factors sort of tie in together. And based on that, the court looked at it and said, hey, this is an area that, that's already covered, and the, and local governments are intruding upon these areas. So just knowing that, as the person represented, it is being appealed. So there will be an 11th Circuit decision, at least the thought is, that there will be an 11th Circuit decision, which would give us greater guidance as to what we should do. In my mind, a, an ordinance of the city is something intended to be permanent. It is not something that is just subject to whim, and I think we should take it deliberately. And so based on the law that's out there, knowing that there is state law that could possibly be passed, there is a decision that says it is the domain of the state to regulate in this area, I would recommend that we, we not pass an ordinance at this time.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, you have the floor.
So what, what can we do to show support and, but, but not just ceremonial show of support, but?
Well, the city has a very strong policy, much stronger than federal law on discrimination. We have a policy that goes beyond what federal law protects, and it's been in existence for a very long time. I mean, certainly this commission could pass a resolution that basically talked about where it stood regarding these rights and, and this process in terms of conversion therapy.
Now, I know that in my meeting with Lakey and the group, they provided some model language for ordinance and what's been used in some other cities. Can we take a look at that and review what's in there to see if there is something that we can salvage from there to, to make it work here in Tallahassee?
Certainly. We can take a look at it. That will be the will of this commission.
Okay. All right. Do I still have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Quickly. Want to make sure we continue to keep Hartsfield Chorus in front of us. They have raised $30,000. They need $35,000. We need to help get them to Carnegie Hall, because when they go, we go. So I'm encouraging all of us to write a check from our personal coffers and ask family and friends to support them. OEV, I know that, I saw some members of OEV here. Darrell Jones is usually here. He lost his grandmother, and so he's with his family, I'm sure. I, you know, sent him a message this morning, so keep Darrell and his family in your prayers. Those of you who know him, you know, he's a grandmama's boy.
His grandmother that was here in town?
She was, yeah, his grandmother was here in town. Yeah. Yeah, she, she passed. And Diana, hit it. We have great news. Everybody knows that sound. That's the sound of the Marching 100. And there they go around the world. They return home and will be in our winter festival parade. They're going to be the grand marshal of the winter festival parade, and I am so looking forward to it. I believe this is the very first time. So we're making history right here in Tallahassee. And this, this proud rattler sitting next to this proud rattler, we are, we are happy to make that announcement. So look out for the Marching 100 at the beginning of the winter festival parade. Thank you, City Manager, for inviting them and making it happen.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Bryant? Commissioner Bryant?
Now, this is, this is probably one of the first times that Diane, Commissioner Williams-Cox, got to speak before me. And she took my list. I'm really upset. But let me, let me reiterate. First of all, let me go to conversion therapy, and, because I had the same conversation. And I'm glad we're going to look at the ordinance, ordinances that have already been passed and the, the one that was provided to us as a model, because I too support the fact that we need to do what we can. I don't know if it's a resolution. I don't, obviously, we need to follow the law. But I, I think that conversion therapy in this city is not something that we really want to support, and I don't think we do. But if we want to make a statement about it as a city, we need to figure out a way to get that done. I, just for the record, I want to definitely say that I, I support the recommendation. I, just for the record, I want to definitely say that I, I support the recommendation from this group. Then, secondly, Hartsfield is on my heart, because last Sunday, we at the Bethel Church, and I share this with you because many of you may have houses of worship, that this could happen, they actually came and did a performance. I shouldn't say performance, but they sang some songs, and the outreach from my church family and Commissioner Williams-Cox's church family was tremendous. We have to get these babies to Carnegie Hall, and I'm telling everybody I can, please support them in whatever way you can and with your connectivity throughout the community. And the last thing about the Marching 100 leading the parade, I mean, that, that is just monumental. So, I, it, it's awesome. So, I'll just leave it at that, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tim, you wanted to jump in also?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to to say a word or two about the, and I have to, and, and Lakey and I are going to meet here soon, and I'm sorry we haven't scheduled a meeting before now, so that I could get educated on conversion therapy. I've heard of it, but I have to admit, I don't know a whole lot, but what you have described this evening is very disconcerting to me as a psychologist or former psychologist, and the effects that it can have on our young people. So, first of all, I'd like to learn more about it and become more educated, but in terms of, I think, what we can do now, and then I have a question for the attorney, is I, I think a resolution would be appropriate. I think maybe directing our lobbying team to keep track of where the legislation is and, and use that resolution to let our legislative delegation know that it's something that we are concerned about and would like to track through the legislative session. So, I think those are some things we can do. And then the question that I have, Madam Attorney, is where, in those municipalities where this ordinance has been passed, what is the effect of law? I mean, does it carry any weight legally?
Well, in terms of, because that took place in the middle district, it would only control in the middle district, so, and it only struck down the Tampa ordinance, so I think those ordinances are still in existence until some action is taken on them. They were prior, so if a higher court makes a determination, then those would be stricken as well, or they would be illegal.
Okay, and so they have the effect of law in those municipalities?
Yes, they do.
Okay, all right. That's what I needed to know.
Commissioner Malo?
Well, first point, I like to celebrate today's International Kindness Day, I learned this morning. Everybody up here has been doing a fantastic job. If you haven't had a chance to be nice to somebody, you got about five more hours. On conversion therapy, we got this flyer today. Oh, thank you. That's very kind of you. On November 19th, there's a town hall focused on conversion therapy that I think should supply more information, but to me, the bottom line is, is this is not medicine, and it should not be practiced as, as such. You know, I'd support the furthest we can go, and really, I mean, in, in the spirit of kindness day, if we're going to stand against hate, I'd like to stand up against it until the court of law tells us that we can. So, I would push this as far as we can by way of ordinance, if that's the will of the board. What I would like to see come back is just all our different options, what's happened in other counties, what this lawsuits look like, where they are in the appeals process, and just the whole gambit of options and what the ramifications of each one would be.
All right, to wrap it up, two things in particular, first and foremost, I will not equivocate. I am in full support of a complete ban of conversion therapy, full stop. No, I'm ready to vote on an ordinance and look forward to having the opportunity to do so. Finally, I want to say, Dr. Lane Bryant, I am very proud of the fact that you are a finalist for Tallahassee Women's Magazine Award Ceremony tomorrow night. Congratulations. You represent us very well, and couldn't be more proud to serve with you. Commissioner Williams-Cox, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, looking forward to working with you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, been a great year.
Enjoyed it.
Um, seeing nothing else, we stand adjourned.
All right. All right.